For Wednesday, November 2nd, it is 7:00 PM. I'm gonna call the meeting in order. Mr. Aho, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Felber.
Here.
Mr. Solera.
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
We're all present?
Mrs. Turner Waldron. Jumped ahead one.
Go try.
I thought you were saying...
Here.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
You know, it's tribe, we're on tribe time. If now you could all please rise and join me to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening once again, and welcome to the students, staff, and families from Samuel Bissell Elementary and RB Chamberlain Middle School. This is the meeting for the Board of Education for November 2nd, 2016. I'm Rob Felber, and I'm honored to serve as the President of the Board of Education. As I read my report, our Cleveland Indians are playing in game seven of the World Series. While maybe just a game to some, I think the lessons of hard work, believing in yourself and your teammates, resonates with what our students, staff, and parents, Tigers who exemplify these values each and every day. The lessons of being a Tiger strong starts with our Cubs, and will carry on throughout their lives, throughout their entire lives. I personally want to thank all those that teach this lesson in our classroom, on the fields, and in the workplace. I also want to report on the life of a man that impacted the Twinsburg schools, and whose presence is found throughout our facilities, policies, and strong traditions. Twinsburg lost John W. Cease this past week. John was a 22-year member of the school board, a Navy veteran, and a teacher at Nordonia High School for 35 years. John was also a pharmacist, but was always a teacher at heart. His legacy, both in family and district accomplishments, is around us daily. Our thoughts and prayers go out to his family, our Tiger family. And now, seeing all the bright and energetic faces of our students, we're reminded of why we're here, so I'm gonna very quickly, on tribe time, turn this meeting over to Mrs. Powers for her superintendent's report.
Ladies and Mr. Felber, Board of Education, good evening, everyone. I know everyone wants to hurry home, and turn on the TV, and watch the tribe, but we do have great kids to celebrate tonight, so we're going to make sure we do that, and do it in a great fashion, and get you home in plenty of time to see that first pitch, no doubt about that. Board of Education, just a few updates for you this evening. You know, we completed our community focus groups last week. This current weekend into next week, I have Mrs. Tringo, Mr. Reese, and Mr. Howland collecting some information from our students, because I think the students have something to say about the future of the Twinsburg City School District, what they want to see in the future, what do they think about 21st century learning. So that will all be a part of the report that we will present to you on November 18th, and I look forward to presenting that information. The spreadsheet of data at this point is huge, and so now we have to whittle that back and, you know, be prepared to present to the Board on the 18th during the workshop session. That'll be at 3:30 at the high school and the LGI. Board of Education, as you know, on October 17th, the school district sponsored a parent and community forum about the opioid epidemic. And you know, I sent the Board an email earlier this week that we heard the very sad news that a student from Woodbridge High School passed away from a heroin overdose just last Friday. So it's hitting close to home, and we certainly are taking this matter quite seriously. Board of Education, I wanted to let you know that Cable 9 videotaped the presentation on the 17th, and it's currently on our website in its totality. You can catch it, a link from my superintendent's message. And so that would be an easy place for our parents, if you happen to miss the forum on the 17th, you can catch it in its totality. I do want to advise you, though, the video, which is called "Chasing the Dragon," is adult-oriented, and so if you're going to sit down with your children, I would suggest that you sit down with them and, you know, talk with them, following the documentary about what they're seeing and why this is an important conversation for all families to engage in. Again, you can catch the rebroadcast of the parent and community forum via my superintendent's message off the district website. Board of Education, tomorrow is a super exciting day in the school district, because tomorrow is the Second Annual Senior Citizen Bus Tour. So we'll be meeting up with our senior citizen friends over at the community center tomorrow morning, and they will be going to all of our schools. They'll have lunch at Samuel Bissell Elementary School. They are going to see a special concert by the Twinsburg High School Tiger Marching Band. They're going to see a mini-concert by our new music teacher over at Dodge, Mr. Andy Nowak, and just have a great opportunity to get in some classrooms with kids and see what school is like today. So we look forward to our visitors tomorrow. Last year was a tremendous success. We did this in January last year, it was a little cold. So it's better weather, and we're gonna have just a great time with our senior citizens. If anybody in the audience happens to have a relative who is a senior citizen in our community, and you would like them to go tomorrow, we are going to be kicking off the bus tour at 10 o'clock tomorrow morning at the community center by the senior center of the community center, and they are welcome to join us. So we look forward to a really special day tomorrow, and our kids are all excited and ready for their special visitors in the morning. Speaking of special, you know, Board of Education, we have a lot of excitement at Twinsburg High School this week, because the Lady Tiger Cross Country Team made it to states, which is this coming Saturday, and it's going to be held in Hebron, Ohio. It's our cross-country, Lady Tigers' cross-country team. Also, Ryan Atkins is our sole Tiger who made it, and so he and the girls are going to be leaving Friday morning, and driving down to Hebron, and running in the OHSAA State Cross Country Meet. And I hear great things about our perspective here as the team gets underway on Saturday. So I'll be there, my husband will be there cheering for the Aurora Greenmen, but that's okay. Family competition is okay with our family, so, but I know our kids are gonna do a great job.
You drive separately.
Yeah, I drive separately, too, right. And I do wanna congratulate Coach Sarah Komet and the entire coaching staff, and all of our cross-country students, as well as all of our fall sports students. We're finishing up now in our fall sports, and it has been a great season, lots of excitement. Our kids are all in, and thank you, parents and community members, for coming out and supporting our kids, and we look forward to a winter sports season as exciting as the fall sports season happened to be. More excitement to tell you. You know, Board of Education, next weekend, this coming weekend, and Monday and Tuesday, is a huge couple of days for Mrs. Johnson and the staff at Samuel Bissell Elementary School, because you know, it is their opportunity to travel to Washington DC for the 2016 National Blue Ribbon Award. We are just so excited, and we can hardly wait to hear about all of your accomplishments this evening. Cheryl Willner is here to represent the Twinsburg Education Association, and she asked just for a second to provide a proclamation to Mrs. Johnson. So Mrs. Johnson, if you wanna come up forward, and Mrs. Willner's going to come up forward to present to you a proclamation on behalf of the Twinsburg Education Association.
Mrs. Johnson. Last time we were here, in early October, we read you this proclamation, but of course, we only had a short amount of time to put it together. So we actually have a lot of time since then to actually make it look very nice. At Samuel Bissell Elementary School, each and every day, second and third grade classroom teachers, building principals, intervention specialists, specialist teachers in the areas of art, music, and physical education, reading teachers, and guidance counselors, therapists, the support staff, including secretaries, paraprofessionals, cooks, custodians, and bus drivers, all work to help students achieve success in learning. We recognize, as the TEA, all the hours spent collaborating in professional learning communities, developing project-based learning activities, seeking out each child's story, and executing skilled teaching methods along with high expectations. This diverse work results in a positive learning environment productive for student achievement. The TEA would like to congratulate the Bissell students and their supportive community for their exceptional accomplishments as a recipient of the National Blue Ribbon School Award for 2016. Congratulations.
Excitement continues at Bissell. It's just such a great, great shining star in our school district, and we look forward to hearing about all that happens in Washington DC next weekend, and Monday and Tuesday as well. Finally, just a reminder, I guess I probably don't have to remind the kids, but Tuesday, November 8th, is a day off from school. It is a professional development day for our staff, and it's also Election Day. And I just encourage everyone to exercise their right to vote. This is a very interesting campaign time, and a very interesting and important election, so I do encourage you to exercise that right, and go out to the polls if you can. Finally, Board of Education, this evening, we have a special presentation for you from the Northeast Ohio Friends of Public Education. You know, several months ago, Board of Education, you passed a resolution which you directed Marty to invoice the state of Ohio for the money that is flowing from our budget to support charter schools. And our friends at the Public Education Partners Group, it's an advocacy group for public education, realize that that happened here, and are here this evening to provide a commendation to you. To do that, it's my pleasure to introduce to you an old friend of mine, Mrs. Ava O'Meara. And Ava is a principal at Highland Drive Elementary School, part of the Brexville-Broadview Heights School District, and I worked with Ava in my last assignment. And also here this evening is Mrs. Marty Franks, and many of us know Marty as a longtime Twinsburg High School teacher, taught English, and now she is a reporter for a local outlet. And they are here this evening to present this commendation to you. Ladies, why don't you come forward?
Good evening, and thank you for having me here this evening, and thank you, Marty, for asking me to be here as well. My name is Ava O'Meara. I'm a K-3 principal in the Brexville-Broadview Heights District. But more importantly, this evening, I am a graduate of RB Chamberlain High School, and I grew up right back behind us in probably what was the first subdivision on Edgewood Drive, if any of you are from Glenwood Acres. So, a long, long journey. Unfortunately, with the Woodbridge news, I was very saddened to hear. But once upon a time, Woodbridge was kind of the trailblazer with respect to public education, finally having enough of losing the money to the charter schools. And their superintendent, Walter Davis, said that what we were dealing with in Ohio is a system of charter schools that are failing, and the state continues to transfer local public funding from traditional public schools to support them. The point being that you all are doing so wonderfully here, in terms of public education, and yet, millions and millions of dollars, 5 million in Woodbridge, went to charter schools between the time that all of that programming began and the time that they invoiced. This began a movement that I'm happy to say has included over 75 school districts in the state of Ohio, including Twinsburg. And the Board of Education had the courage to invoice the state as well, to the tune of a little over $2.7 million. So as a representative of Public Education Partners, and a founder of the Northeast Friends of Public Education, I would like to present the certificate to Kathy Powers and the Twinsburg Board of Education. Congratulations, Mrs. Powers, for having the courage of the conviction that public education is an extremely, extremely important part of everyone's life. And you have made it, obviously, a priority. So I thank you, and I'd like to also mention that Mr. Curtis is part of our Public Education Partners. So we have numbers that are growing, and I thank you so much. Thank you for all of your help.
We thank you for that presentation. I'm not sure, Mrs. Powers, you've finished with your report, but I recall that when we passed that resolution, we made the comment that, yes, we're invoicing the state, but we weren't expecting a check. We weren't expecting anybody to come with a big check. That we were doing it on behalf of education, and felt our job was to educate, and why we took that step. And it's nice to know that we're not alone with 74 other school districts, but tonight is just another mention of educating, and I'd be remiss. I know Mr. Curtis has probably some comments that we can say.
No, I mean...
Because I know you've been studying this very closely.
Yeah, other than, you know, we expect to bring awareness. You know, part of our job is to make sure that the community understands and is aware of all of the things that are impacting us financially, and charter schools is definitely one of those issues outside of the TPP. But specifically, you know, I've continued to bring this to the forefront in hopes that you, our constituents, will make your voices heard at the ballot box, and also by contacting your local state representatives to make sure that they're aware of what your concerns are and the impact of our local school district. So we appreciate your support, we appreciate the acknowledgement, and we're gonna keep working on behalf of the school district to make sure that we do all that's best for us financially and academically.
I think we're still in your report, so I'll toss it over to you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. So this evening, we have students to celebrate, lots of great Tigers that are here, and so I'd like to ask Mrs. Johnson to come forward to celebrate some outstanding students from Samuel Bissell Elementary School. We know why they're a National Blue Ribbon Award winner, because of all the great kids, and we're so glad that you are here this evening, boys and girls, and your parents. And Mr. Felber's going to be presenting a pin as we talk through the names of all of our wonderful kids. So, Mrs. Johnson is excited to present to all the boys and girls a certificate, just saying what great, great students you are, and why you are so extremely special to us as a student at Samuel Bissell Elementary School. Boys and girls, when you come forward, please come up and shake Mr. Felber's hand. He has a pin for you, and then, Mrs. Johnson always wants a hug, I know how she operates. And then, you have a certificate, and then if you could just stay in front of the table until all the boys and girls' names are called, because I know our parents would like a nice photo of you once the whole group is up here, okay? So to begin, the Students of the Month program at Samuel Bissell Elementary School recognizes outstanding student achievement at the second and third grade levels. The focus of this recognition program is on citizenship, academics, social, civic, volunteer, or other accomplishments that set these students apart from their peers. We'd like to proudly acknowledge the positive accomplishments of the following students. We're gonna begin with our second-grade students, and our first second grader is Tanaya Carter from Mrs. Zista's class. Next, we have Dylan Fantone from Mrs. Robles' class. Next, we have Ellie Greenwald from Mrs. Conrad's class. And then, Sarah Nana from Mrs. Springer's class. And our last second grader recognized this evening is Sydney Smith from Miss King's class. Moving on to our big kids, our third graders, we have Gavin Davis from Mrs. Fuge's class. Aiden Durst from Mr. Doloresco's class. I don't want to point this out, but I'm going to anyhow. I love the back of your hair. Turn around and show it right to the camera.
Oh, that's awesome.
I see. Michael Lescopin from Mrs. Gonzalez's class. Audrey Martin from Mrs. Rowetter's class. Cameron McLafferty from Mrs. Angler's class. Lucas Pittner from Mrs. Kiliani's class. Erin Pavovic from Mrs. Patskulitsky's class. Amaya Thomas from Mrs. Watson's class. And last but not least, Kelsey Williams from Mrs. Cardeman's class. Would you please join me in congratulating these wonderful students with a round of applause? Boys and girls, I know your parents would like a great photo of you, so if you can hold your certificate sort of in front of your chest, and let's give those great big Tiger smiles out to the audience. Congratulations, one and all. Thank you, boys and girls, you may be seated.
Thank you, boys and girls, I'm so excited. We're gonna get together on Friday and have lunch together, and just have a great time celebrating all that you do every day, so I'm so proud of you, and can't wait till Friday. It's 11:30, and it's gonna be exciting. I would like to say a special thank you to TEA for your recognition. Our staff works so hard, and our students work so hard, and our parents work so hard, and we all work together, and we make it happen. So thank you so much for the recognition, we really appreciate it, and it is beautiful. So thank you for taking the time to do that, thank you so much. We also celebrate Staff of the Month, so I would like to share with you three of our staff members who will be recognized tonight. We're gonna start with Mrs. Rowetter. At Samuel Bissell, at Samuel Bissell Elementary School, our staff, they actually nominate one another. So Mrs. Rowetter was nominated as one of our Staff of the Month, and I would like to share with you what it says. It says, "Mrs. Rowetter holds high expectations for her students. She has wonderful classroom management where the students know what is expected. Even in stressful situations, she remains calm and confident." She's a Cubs fan. So you have fun. Starting her third year at Samuel Bissell, she has taught both second and third grade. She has risen to every challenge she encounters. She has taken more of a leadership role in her third-grade PLC meetings, creating new lessons and activities. This summer, having taught one year of third grade, she created centers for the classroom that are meeting the needs of all of our students. She seeks out other colleagues and staff members to collaborate with, and she finds new resources that meets the needs of the students in her classroom. Within our building community, she always has a smile on her face. She makes light of all situations with her upbeat personality, and Samuel Bissell is truly lucky to have her, and to have her join our team. These are just a few of the many reasons why she has been nominated as Staff of the Month. Congratulations. Our second staff member is Mrs. Watson. I would like to share with you a little bit about Mrs. Watson. So Mrs. Watson was nominated because she is consistently willing to work as a team player, and to offer her time and energy to complete curriculum planning, work with students, and mentor fellow colleagues. As a matter of fact, she took on one of our new teachers. She went under some rest of training for all new teachers, and now she is currently mentoring one of our brand-new staff members, so she's doing a really, really great job. Jennifer always has a positive attitude and focuses on making students feel welcome in her classroom. She is always willing to share ideas and learning tools as well. She is an outstanding teacher and a role model. Congratulations. And we have one more staff member to share, Ms. Workman. Ms. Workman, if you can come forward. And Ms. Workman was nominated because she is such a positive asset to our school. We are so lucky to have such a warm, caring, and smart person here at Samuel Bissell Elementary. Her students know she cares for them, and she is always making innovative adjustments for their learning, and is checking on them to make sure they are successful. She holds them accountable, and lets them know how proud she is when they show grit. And at our school, we use grit every day. Teachers use grit, staff use grit, and our students use grit. And what grit stands for for us, the G is, give it your all. Well, Mrs. Johnson had a brain freeze. G is, and I say it every night, that's right. G is, the students probably could tell you, G is give it your all. R is respond with a positive attitude. I is be an independent thinker, and T is be totally engaged in everything you do. And so our students are definitely showing grit every single day. They persevere, they give it their all, they respond with positive attitudes. We do a positive check in the morning, and I say, okay, let's check attitudes. What kind of attitude do we have walking through the door? Of course, I don't hear them, but in their minds, they're saying, a positive one. So we come with a positive attitude, and we get it done, and we're totally engaged. So, I'm sorry to get off task, but we are glad to have you as part of our staff at Samuel Bissell. Congratulations, Ms. Workman. So together as a team, we work very hard every day to make sure that our students are ready and prepared. And thank you, parents, for sending us your absolute best, because we try to take care of them to our absolute best. So thank you so much for your partnership as well, and congratulations to our students and our Staff of the Month.
All right, now I'd like to ask Mr. Michael King to come forward. Mr. King is our Assistant Principal at RB Chamberlain Middle School, and now we're going to be celebrating our middle school students and their Students of the Month.
I never like having to follow Ms. Johnson, because it's like having to be a comedian that follows Jerry Seinfeld. It just doesn't make it happen where... For Chamberlain, we, not that we expect more, we expect different. There's a higher maturity level, higher academic level. We want our students to be more enriched in the school community. So our criteria are a little different, but it's kind of the same. We want leaders. We need leaders for our school, leaders for our community. The six criteria for Chamberlain Students of the Month are, the first, shows respect and consideration for others; the second, shows enthusiasm for academic and extracurricular activities; three, exerts a positive influence on classmates; four, exhibits leadership characteristics; five, exhibits patriotism and democratic principles; and six, shows responsibility. The following students have been selected by their respective teaching teams, and the Students of the Month for October for 7th grade, Hannah Seitz. Second student is John Delgram. Second student is John Delgram. Evie Callahan. Maybe at the World Series, who knows? Joshua Thompson. Might be sitting next to her at the World Series. Eighth grade, first up, Ariana Starkey. They didn't invite me. All right, I know this guy's here. Brody Markovitz, come on up. Lauren Jablonski. And last but not least, Josh Gammon. All right, your parents paid a lot of good money for those braces. Let's show those smiles. Take some good pictures. Very good. One more round of applause for the Chamberlain Students of the Month. While you're finishing up your pictures, you folks can go ahead and have a seat. Just a couple of quick things that are going on at Chamberlain. We're very excited as we were talking about the high school cross-country team. Chamberlain, our cross-country team did incredibly well through its season. We were invited to participate in the unofficial state middle school meet, you know, middle school meet. But anyways, the 23 best teams in the state of Ohio for middle school went down and participated in a state track meet just before the official high school state meet. Our girls' team came in ninth. So we're loading them up for the high school. We're doing our best. The boys came in second. Yeah, so that one lone tiger that we're getting up to states this year, hopefully there's gonna be an entire pack, you know, entire den of them. So we're very excited about that. They did incredibly well. We hosted our first P T A dance just a little over a week ago. We had almost half the student body there. We raised several thousand dollars for the P T A. We're very excited about that. They did an incredible job. Our P T A co-hosted with myself, Mr. Reese, and several staff members. They provided food, drinks, and games, of course, dancing for the students, and it went incredibly well. We're very excited about that. Tomorrow is our third Tiger Day. We're doing Tiger Days every Thursday through the second and third nine weeks. And what Tiger Day, oh, see, look at that, we got some excitement. Tiger Day is, what we're doing is we're taking three minutes from each academic period and we are developing enrichment programs for all of our students. Some of the programs are, if your student was excited about art, we created a 2D, I'm sorry, a 3D to 2D program where they work with Ms. Van Dees in not using computers, but how can they do that by hand? A lot of this stuff can be done with computers incredibly easy. But to do it by hand helps you understand how the computer operates. So it creates that left brain, right brain coordination. Others are building homes with less of a digital footprint with Mr. Schmack. Myself and Mr. Reese, we developed a leadership academy where we're having leadership activities and leadership speakers come in. A couple of speakers to note, two weeks ago Congressman Joyce came in and spoke with our students. We're also having the county executive, Eileen Shapiro come in, Mary Yates, Trustee Baylaw, and several others come in and work with our students to talk about what leadership is. As part of that, we had some programs we were gonna make a part of Tiger Days, but we thought they were too important. So we're going to build them into our programming throughout the year or just in a couple of straight days. Two of them are CPR and another program is Too Good For Drugs. By the end of December, every eighth grader will go through a CPR course. We've decided that that was too important not to happen. We are only going to train a certain amount of students because maybe they're looking for babysitting jobs. But it's too important. You could end up saving somebody's life. I know when I was a kid, when I was in high school, I was working a job and I was outside. A lady had passed out and stopped breathing. I did CPR. Mrs. Fanton is with us this evening. Her husband was at Disney World and ended up performing CPR at Disney World, saving somebody's life. You never know, one of these eighth graders could be saving somebody's life. Then the question you have is why not seventh grade? Unfortunately, and I'm not picking on anybody, but some of our seventh graders are just not big enough to do some of the compressions and whatnot. So we're gonna save that again for the eighth graders. The other program is Too Good For Drugs. This will be happening every Thursday through our P E slash health classes. We're gonna be working with our students about how dangerous drugs are. You know, it used to be, oh, drugs, whatever, ha, 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 whatever, you know, this won't hurt, that won't hurt. We're watching hundreds of our teens and 20-somethings die every week throughout the country. This isn't something we can laugh about. It's happening in our own backyard. Several local police departments ran out of Narcan four weeks ago. That's the drug that they use to revive people after a heroin overdose. It's not something we can turn away from anymore. We have got to be vigilant. It starts here. It starts in our homes. It starts in our schools. We're trusted adults. So we're very proud to offer that. That is through the A D M board, through a grant we received, through the Summit County A D M with senior administration, building administration, and our partners at Beachbrook. We did just amazing work in getting that started. We're very proud of it. So thank you for listening. Go Tribe and anything longer, blame it on them.
Thank you, Mr. King. I just wanted to mention that that CPR training is being brought to us free of charge from university hospitals. We have something called the Mayor's Initiative that was offered to our school district now three years ago and they have been extremely helpful to us in getting some of our staff members trained. Now they're interested in helping us train our students. So we thank university hospitals for their continued support of our school district. Mr. Felber, that concludes my comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. Now would normally be the time where I'd say it's good to go do homework, have dinner. There may be something else that you're trying to rush to do, so you're more than welcome to stay if we're late, is Mr. King's fault. But you're allowed to leave, so. More than welcome to stay then. With that, we're going to be moving on to committee reports and I'm not sure if we have any committee reports that I'm aware of. So we're gonna move on. I'm gonna see if there's any remonstrance and if it quiets down, then we'll have it. But I'm not seeing any remonstrance, so we're just gonna keep moving. And I will wait for the doors to close and have it quiet down just a bit.
Okay, we are in Section G, Treasurers' Report and Recommendations, and without objection from my colleagues, I'm gonna read the four items there. G1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, regular meeting of October 19th, 2016, and is sent to the Board under separate cover. G2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the following financial reports of the month of September 2016, Bank Reconciliation General Fund Financial Summary Report and Financial Report by Fund, as sent to the Board under separate cover. G3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a check register for the month of September 2016, the total including payroll, $4,772,405.22. And lastly, G4, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a five-year forecast for school year 2016, 2017, as sent to the Board under separate cover. Is there a motion for those four as read?
So moved. Moved by Mr. Solera. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Tore Waldron. And Marty, if you have comments on the atypical items.
Sure. The five-year forecast is one of the things that we have on the agenda tonight. The forecast is something that we do twice a year. The one in this time of year is updating the whole five-year forecast. So the reason we do the five-year forecast, you have to kind of do that every year. It was something that was developed by the O D E, state legislation. And it basically just kind of shows, you know, really they look at a lot of the current year informations there. And then it goes out, you know, four extra years. What it kind of does is it just kind of shows the probability of where the district's going finance-wise. It shows the revenues and expenditures. Typically, though, these revenues go over two different state budget years or cycles. You know, so we make our best estimates of what the budgets are gonna look like coming out of the state moving forward. And also too, in those budgets, we put any type of levies that are up for renewal, we put those in there. What happens to the levies is they actually, when they get close to renewal time, is they come down to the bottom of that spreadsheet. So the amount going across the top gets reduced and then that amount gets put in the bottom part of that spreadsheet. So it's kind of a little bit of, it takes a little bit of looking to find that, where that revenue source went to. But it's really pretty much in line with how the budgets have looked like in the past. There's no surprises in there. The one thing that's important with the five-year forecast is there's notes that go with it. They do explain a lot of the activities and the things that are going on in the forecast. So if someone's interested in the five-year forecast, there's a link on my Treasurer's website, links down to O D E. And then, you know, you can see the forecast. All the forecasts for the school, any school district, you know, the O D E has that on their website. So if you wanted to compare ours to Solon or Nordonia or Aurora, you could do that. So there's a lot of good information there. And probably at one of the future board meetings, I want to have a presentation, but more of a financial presentation than a five-year forecast. But it'll encompass, you know, the basis of the five-year forecast.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any further comments? See, non-roll call, please.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Tore Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
And that item passes 5-0. We are in Section H, Action Items Personnel. Again, without objection from my colleagues, we'll read these three items together. H1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts their certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory O R C background checks. H2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit H2 as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory O R C background checks. H3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory O R C background checks. Is there a motion for those three items as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Curtis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Any discussion? Non-roll call, please.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Tore Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and those three items pass 5-0. Now to Action Items New Business, the long read. We've got quite a few items. So I'm gonna read those nine without objection from my colleagues. I1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education confirms the reappointment of Dr. Samuel Taylor to the position of trustee for the Twinsburg Public Library for the term January 1st, 2017, and ending December 31st, 2023, per the attached exhibit. I2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following police officers and rates based on start time for security at events for the 2016, 2017 school year and permit the superintendent to employ additional personnel as needed, and those names are listed there. I3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal for an overnight and extended student trip for the Twinsburg High School cross-country team to travel to Hebron, Ohio for the O H S A A Cross-Country State Championship Meet on November 4th, 2016, and returning on November 5th, 2016. The cost of the trip is being paid by the Twinsburg Athletic Department with financial assistance from the Twinsburg Athletics Booster and this was sent to the Board under separate cover. I4, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a, approves, rather, a proposal for an overnight extended student trip for the Twinsburg High School Great Expectations Show Choir to travel to the Ada High School for the Ada Show Choir Invitational, November 5th, 2016. The cost of this trip is being paid in full by the Twinsburg Vocal Music Boosters and is sent to the Board under separate cover. I5, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal for an overnight extended student trip for the Twinsburg High School Mood Swingers Show Choir to travel to Ada, Ohio, I'm sorry, Ada High School for the Ada Show Choir Invitational, November 5th, 2016. The cost of this trip is being paid in full by the Twinsburg Vocal Music Boosters and was sent to the Board under separate cover. I6, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the appointment of Denise Trappigan, Director of Pupil Services, as a Twinsburg City School District Foster Care Coordinator. I7, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves revised administrative personnel salary schedule for the attached exhibit. Job descriptions are cook manager in training, A V technical manager. I8, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following job descriptions as per the attached exhibit, cook manager in training, and A V technical manager. And finally, resolve, I9, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a compensatory rate for the A V technical manager at $26.50 per hour. Is there a motion for those nine items as read?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Tore Waldron. And back to the beginning, comments, let's see. I always ask Marty to explain the library situation. It's kind of neat where the fiduciary for library and it's really a pass-through, but it's a formality that we approve their board appointments. Have I characterized that properly?
Yes, you have.
Okay, I got it right. Took me three years. Couple trips, we wish our students and athletes and performers good luck with that. Mrs. Powers, anything in particular that you wanted to point out?
The appointment of Mrs. Trappigan as the district's foster care coordinator, that is now a requirement that is stipulated in the Every Student Succeeds Act, E S S A. You will soon be hearing from us that we're required now to report student performance for our homeless students as well as students who are in foster care. And so Mrs. Trappigan oversees that part of our school operation, working with all kinds of special programming for our students. And so it makes sense that she would be the foster care coordinator that is appointed by the school district. With regard to the administrative personnel salary schedule, Board of Education, you know that effective December 1st, there is going to be a change to F L S A and that the requirement is that an administrator or a person who works in a supervisory capacity has to make a certain threshold as far as their annual salary. And if they do not make that particular threshold, then they are going to be open for overtime compensatory time and such. So we have made the adjustment to our assistant transportation supervisor. By adjusting that on the salary schedule, it will then increase Mrs. Tracy Abbott's salary to that threshold of $47,000 and some change. And that makes it so that she would be a salaried individual and not an hourly individual, which would be the change that would have to occur if the Board didn't take that action this evening. The job descriptions for the cook manager in training and the A V technical manager. The cook manager in training is actually a new position that was created in the last contract negotiations with the Twinsburg Support Staff Association. And now that there is a job description, or hopefully once you approve it, I should say, we can then post for that position. The importance of this is Mr. Bendis is always interested in having talent onboard should there be the incident where one of the cook managers retires, moves on to another position. Being the cook manager is a pretty important position. It's a technical nature. There's a lot of federal stipulations to that position and so by having a cook manager in training position, we have somebody in the wings should there need a rise to promote that person to a cook manager. So that's that. And then the A V technical manager position, you know, Board of Education, when you approved the fee structure, the new fee structure back a couple of months ago. One of the things that we know is we're working behind the scenes to have corporate partners here in town to hopefully sponsor some new technology, being the new Tiger Stadium scoreboard, two new scoreboards in the gymnasium at Twinsburg High School, as well as large digital screens in the commons and next to the auditorium door. All that will be paid for through very generous businesses here in town. But when we have visitors who But when we have visitors who want to use that equipment, we need somebody to manage that equipment for us. And so that fee structure provides for individuals, organizations who want to use our equipment and our facilities moving forward, that they understand that they will have to also have somebody supporting that need, somebody who knows how to operate all this new technology. And that's what that position's all about. And then number nine is actually just the salary or the hourly rate for the AV technical manager.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Toreal Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and those nine items pass 5-0. We are now at a miscellaneous, we do have a discussion regarding the appointment of the Twinsburg Board of Education's representative to the Cuyahoga Valley Career Center's Board of Education that's effective January 2017. As a mention note, I'll kind of kick it off. And the way that board is structured, we're, have representatives from the eight school districts, one from each district, but one district every, it used to be every three years. Now it's going to be every one year, correct, Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
That we're going to have, that, that particular district will have two representatives. Well, we've, we're fortunate to be in that position where we had two representatives for three years, because that was the old rules. But that is coming to an end. And now we, we need to officially get into a resolution at some point in a future agenda. But tonight's, we'll leave the discussion. I'm going to maybe toss to Mr. Curtis and maybe talk about your experience. Mr. Curtis has been the board's representative to Cuyahoga Valley Career Center's Board of Education along with Steve Shebeck, who used to also be a member of this Board of Education. And Mr. Curtis is currently serving as that board's president, so.
Yes, I'm president of the CBCC right now. And throughout my last three years, it's been, been a great experience. Gotten to work alongside of eight other individuals, which is an interesting experience, quite different from serving on this board of five members. But more importantly, I've been involved in, excuse me, some major construction in addition to the facility, as well as working in a collaborative way with Dr. Roebuck. And, you know, Mr. Shebeck, he's, you know, been involved with, with the CBCC for quite some time now. So my seat, I currently serve in the rotating seat that will be moving on to, I believe, Brexville Broadview Heights. And so it's really coming to an end. Steve's, Steve's seat ends his three-year term as well as mine. So our board is required to appoint someone for, for the seat that's going to be open.
And I'd like to recommend that we reappoint Mark Curtis for this position.
Okay, and again, we're not in a resolution, just having a discussion, so that's a good point. I did also personally speak with Mr. Shebeck and thank him for his service. I believe he was on this board for 12 years, Mrs. Powers? Steve Shebeck?
For CBCC.
I know this board in that, yeah, but somewhere in that neighborhood. But he did express his, you know, you know, his thanks for, for all the support, but it was time. And so, you know, he said he wasn't interested in keeping that position moving forward, but he's done a great job representing our district both for this board and that board as well. And I would also concur with Mrs. Davis that Mark's doing a good job, we'll keep him close.
Yeah, yeah, I've enjoyed my time, and I'm, you know, I'd be inclined to continue if, if, if the board wishes. I know that my colleagues at the CBCC have expressed their interest in me staying as well as Dr. Roebuck. So I've managed to manage the workload of two meetings a month for us and then a meeting a month for those guys, but it keeps me on my toes.
Any further comments?
No, and I would agree, I think Mark's done a great job of keeping us informed of what's going on over there and keeping us in the loop as far as how our, our children are doing over there. And so I think it's been great for him to be a part of that. And I would additionally think it would be a good thing to continue.
Will there be a resolution in the future? You may vote differently. But no, officially, we, again, for those wondering from a procedural standpoint, public meeting, need to discuss it, and then we will have an official resolution in a future, future board meeting. And those terms are, don't start until January 1. Is there any further miscellaneous with that?
Well, the, the resolution will actually go on the board's agenda for your organizational meeting in January.
That's right, that's when we, that's when we, quite a bit of the organizational stuff, so.
And actually, the choreography of that is, your board meeting is before CBCC's first board meeting for January, so it works fine for us.
Right, so there's a chain of command there, okay. Anything else for miscellaneous?
Just a reminder for the public, I know that Mrs. Powers mentioned Election Day next Tuesday. Ironically, with the CBCC, we have a renewal levy that is going to be on the ballot. And I want to make sure that our community is aware of that. And allowing us to continue the great work that we're doing. Failure to renew this levy could drastically impact programming and our financial stability. The revenues that are currently coming as a result of this renewal represents about 40% of our operating revenue. So it's a pretty significant portion of money. And without it, we'd have to make some tough decisions. So we're very hopeful that our community, as well as the other, the other communities, will continue to support this. It's my understanding that, you know, I forget how many years, but it's been a long time since it hasn't passed. So we don't have any inclination that it won't, but we don't want to take anything for granted. We want to make sure that we educate our, our voters to make sure that we support the activities of the CBCC.
You just have to walk through those halls and see the dedication of the staff and the students and the energy, or I would encourage you, even dine at the restaurant that they have open on certain hours. And a lot of those students happen to be Twinsburg students. They always are called out, and they do a fantastic job with the front and back of the house. And then all the specialized programs that they have there. Anything further, miscellaneous? All right, we do have need for executive session. I will make a motion that the Board of Education enters into executive session at 7:56 to discuss the discipline of a student per the Board of Education Policy 0166A, and to discuss employment, discipline, and compensation of public employees as per Board of Education Policy 0166A. I've made that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis, is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Toreal Waldron?
Yes.
Thank you, and we are now in executive session. There is no business anticipated at the end of that executive session when we reconvene. So we will wish you a good night and go Tribe.